Let's call this meeting to order. The Central Curry School District Board of Directors, 6:00 PM at the Gold Beach High School Library, December 18th, 2019. It will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
I did knock some cobwebs off my trusty binder, but I did find it. So I'll read the mission statement, I guess, since Luke's not here. He's my trusty binder person. The mission of the Central Curry School District, number one, in partnership with families and community is to ensure each and every student is prepared to succeed and contribute in a global society by engaging in a challenging personalized program of educational excellence. With that, we'll move to number two. 2.1 has been postponed until January, so we'll move to 2.2, which is the At-A-Glance.
All right, so these came out just a day or two after your October board meeting, so they're a little bit of old news. So you might recall, over the past several years, the state of Oregon has gone through a series of ways to share with the public how the progress going on in schools. And during the No Child Left Behind time, schools were actually rated as excellent or satisfactory or unsatisfactory, needs improvement, and so there were sanctions that went back. In the last couple of years, they've gone to more of this format, where they pick different indicators and then show where there's been progress made over the, as compared to the previous year, as well as against the Oregon State average. So in briefly, the first page is the district report, and I'll let you take a quick glance on it. Probably the one that's, that you're gonna see a little bit of a trend in is the individual student progress. We're seeing that's the growth as compared to specific scores on the smarter balance, but that overall, the district at the elementary school is on a high trajectory for, for growth. Meaning, they've had growth, not that they have ways to go, but... And then the graduation rate, remember the blip from the previous year where we had 52%? You know, it really, we jumped up to 78. That last one, the number six there, is a little deceiving because it's over two years behind, so, because this will be the graduating class of 18, but we're getting a report on it in the fall of 19. A little bit, no? On the back, then, would be some more demographic data. Again, this is the district-wide, and then they give you some indicators. This is where it breaks it down into the subgroups. And again, you'll see a lot of these groups as we transition into the Student Success Act and all the underrepresented groups that, or different subgroups that are challenged in meeting normal goals. Anyway, so there's that. The middle section would be Riley Creek's report. And then principals are asked to put in a little bit of narratives on the cover sheets of their individual school report cards. So you'll see under the Riley Creek, Mr. Denning has put the school goals, the state's goals, and then the safe and welcoming environment. And then at the high schools, done the same thing. Also, on, on both reports, they, there's the About Our School, and those, again, are open text boxes that the principals submit narratives under those specific categories. If you wanted to get a little deeper into the information, there's a second packet. I'm sorry, I should move that quickly. Are there any questions or comments about a first glance on these?
To me, this is one indicator, I guess, the free and reduced lunch. I always had our number a lot higher.
It is, and when Crystal saw that, she also said, "Huh?" Because, yeah, our, our overall is more in the 6, 55 to 60%.
District-wide.
District-wide, yes.
Yeah, exactly. See, it shows like the Riley Creek, 54%, or, excuse me, Gold Beach High School.
Yeah, but it has 31 for the elementary. That's, that's not, that's not good. So I refer her to the person at ODE that collected that data, and said, "Hmm, you gotta try something different there," because that's, that's not accurate.
What qualifies a mobile student?
So someone who begins, either begins the school year here and leaves, or someone who moves here during the year.
Within that year?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think ours is around 20, yeah, around 20%. So again, that, that looks like 19. You know, that certainly has an impact, especially at the high school, where they have students transferring in their junior and senior year with less credits to be able to graduate, then that counts.
Right.
Has an impact on our graduation rates.
Oh, yeah, just looking at your super tender, just the trends, September.
Oh, yeah.
And by right now, it's always starting to move down.
And, yeah, we've already identified that there are gonna be three new students coming to the high school during winter break, so it's, we, we're...
Yeah, so it kind of regenerates activity as well.
Yep. You know, what I've noticed, and you guys have much more experience in this community than I do, winter break seems to be the time when jobs turn over, and so people either move looking for a new job, a new opportunity, or they're moving back to the community because maybe they left for a while, or maybe a new job opportunity came up here, because that's, that's when they swing open here, too. So we see a lot of movement in and out, and generally things, they, they've stayed in equilibrium for how many move out and how many move in.
Right. This report has gone, as I shared, kind of its history, it's gone from the place where realtors would have these as a part of their listings to saying, "Well, my school, this house is in an excellent district," you know, or, "Stay away from this school because they're," you know. So again, thankfully, that era is gone. If you wanted to get real deep into the data, this is a, just the district reports profile in detail, but I picked the district one rather than the other two schools, because this really is all encompassing. So in this one in particular, they give you a three-year snap, it's not just a snapshot of one year, but actually gives you the past three years, and then it averages those three years to come up with a certain percentage, and then it gives you a level on that percentage. So as an example, maybe the second to the last page, just for fun, the ninth graders on track. It says that, this would be, so again, at the end of ninth grade, students are still on track, meaning they have earned six out of seven credits. And so you can see the three-year average for all students' percentage, 94.8, which puts us now go up into the colored rainbow box, and it has 94.8, it's not 95, otherwise it'd be level five. But our economically disadvantage has level five. If you were to go back in the middle of the books, this is, again, it goes through the English Language Arts and Math by three grades, K-5, 6, 8, and then the high school being, having the assessment in the 11th grade. And it shows you where, again, proudly, I would, I would refer you to the growth pages, and you'll see that we are, we are in the levels three and four, but on the academic assessment scores, we're in levels two and three. And so this just goes, like I said, a little deeper into the details. And this might be data we look at at a future time, if that helps with some of our goal, goal set. Do you want to add anything to your report, or?
Uh, no. No, I kind of let the, the specific data out, because again, we'd be reviewing this today, so I can give a more overview of some of the things happening at the high schools.
Good.
All right, thank you very much. Three agenda changes.
Other than 2.1.
No, no more changes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Just, I guess, from your standpoint, the confidence level, just like, as you see, maybe potentially a glaring error in the, in the free and reduced lunch there, I mean, the confidence level in that type of report and the other indicators is what I'm getting at?
Sure.
What's your confidence level?
They, they are accurate.
Yeah.
They are accurate. Yeah, I can't explain that one specifically, but the students with disabilities write on 13%.
So I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
If you were to review it, you could get a good picture.
And I think one of the ones that, for me, is, is sort of an interesting question, because there's not a lot of discussion specifically about it, is the, and this was not unique to hear, this was as well in Springfield, college-going, students entering a two or four-year college within one year of completing high school, as reported by National Student Clearinghouse. Not all students have to register with the National Student Clearinghouse, so the veracity of that data, once you start looking at it, is it, is it accurate? Also, it doesn't take into account if a student takes a year off, and then, well, you know what, that, that job I thought was really gonna be awesome, so that next year, they start in the next fall, that's not within a calendar year of their graduation, therefore they don't count. They're, they're, that, while the 42% may be accurate, as far as the students that they know, one year, within one year after high school graduation, that registered with the National Clearing, Student Clearinghouse, yes, 42% of our students may have done that, but how many more of them continued on after, or did not go to a school that registered them with that, things like that, that's a different question. So I know other districts are looking for their own ways of keeping track of that kind of data, and I think that's something I'd be interested in doing at the high schools as well.
And gear up, helps us with that data.
All right, sorry, Mr. Wright? No? No, questions are good. Number four, consent agenda, approved minutes of the October 16th, 2019 regular meeting.
I believe those were emailed to you.
Yes, they were.
I approve, or I move to approve consent agenda as presented.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved. Citizen input? Please hit the lectern, state your name and address for the record.
Do I have to, can I stay here?
I will make an exception, since there are so many people here.
I appreciate it, thank you. My name is David Barnes, I live up in the Sunken Grade section of Jerry's Flat Road. I'm here tonight, I was wondering, House Bill 2377 to pass last year would grant tax exemption to rehabilitated or newly constructed multifamily dwellings that fell within the workforce, workforce pricing range, which is a step above low-income housing. As a, in order to qualify for one of these exemptions on a property, it requires a vote of 51% of the tax base of that property. Being that this school board is 53%, this school district is 53% of the tax base for the Gold Beach area, it would require your consent. I know in my house, I pay $1,300 a year in school taxes. I spoke to Representative Brock Smith about this, he was the one who put this, he wrote this and put this, was its main sponsor, and he said that for each additional student that the school gets, they get additional state money. Workforce rental prices are made for families, so for every new unit, you can figure on, I don't know what the numbers here, where I come from, it used to be 1.7 kids per new unit of that kind of, of that pricing of houses. So if somebody builds 10 units, that's gonna put 20 more kids in your school system. Are you willing to, in 10 units, I don't, if the taxes, if your cut of that is $40,000 a year, are you going to get an offset enough from the state that you can absorb that? I don't know if this body has ever discussed this, or if you had an opinion on it that was given when this was being proposed up in Salem, but if the city of Gold Beach was to pass an ordinance calling for this, then it would fall on you. If the county was to pass one for their lands outside city limits, it would also come to you to be the decider on this, and I was wondering if it's a topic that you had ever brought up yet?
We've not discussed it as a group.
Okay.
Nor were we approached to discuss it by anybody in the legislature.
Okay. I'd be happy to do some research and get back.
Yeah, we definitely, I remember reading it, but I, the details are pretty vague at this point, so I mean, yeah, we, I know I personally would need to do some reading to pass judgment, but it's, it's worth, it's worth the question.
Okay, I just, you know, I didn't know if it was on your radar or not, I, you know, it's kind of, it's, there's a lot of hoops that have to get jumped through before it becomes reality, and essentially, you guys are one of the biggest hoops there is, you know, so all the other districts combined don't equal you. So, you know, it really falls on you, and I was just wondering your flavor for something like that, or your inclination towards it, you know? Like I said, Representatives Brock Smith told me that the numbers work, that, you know, the more students you get, the more money you get, and it's more than enough to offset your loss of taxes, but, you know, it wouldn't just be you that wouldn't be losing, it would be all the other districts that get, you know, the nine or 10, 12 districts that I pay into every time I pay taxes, so...
All the special districts, you mean?
Yeah.
Library and water.
It would be a complete exemption on property taxes for a 10-year period. So, you know, it impacts everybody, and you guys are the big vote in that, so. I don't mean to put all this weight on your shoulders, but when the time comes, you know...
Yeah, we'll do a little, we'll do some, some homework and some reading, and I know where to find it.
Okay. All right, I appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
That was all I can promise, go up and have dinner, huh?
Oh, fine. You can watch the video later.
Carl will send it to me later on. Maybe we'll watch a basketball game first.
There you go.
Have a good evening, folks.
Thank you.
This major, you're up.
Hey, I think it's about the game, because she usually goes with the team for the poker. So I'm here, and I like to speak a lot on the morals in this school, and like, how the kids are feeling, because I know you guys know all the numbers. I mean, that's cool, I don't. I just, you know, you're around kids all day, and you kind of see what people think and what they feel. And I, with basketball especially, which I think is really cool, all the kids, although our sports aren't like winning leagues and total rock stars, everyone's so committed. Like, sports are the number one most important thing to these kids, and like, I don't know if that would influence any kind of decisions, but just keep that in mind. You know, people go to school every day so they can go practice, people do, keep their grades up so they can do the sports. You know, it means a lot to these people, and I don't know, it speaks a lot on the character of the people in this school, because, you know, a lot of times, losing gets people down, and it doesn't. So I think that's really important to bring up. Oh my gosh, I feel like I'm getting red.
You're fine, it's just us. We know you.
Yeah. Another thing, Swift's Civics, do you guys know about that, the Civics senior, the Civics Christmas thing? Oh my gosh, that is the most amazing thing. It's so cool, it's so fun, and everyone does it. Like, it's not a class where some people are like, everyone's doing something. And if there's any way, like, more classes could get involved in that, I know Swift is definitely amazing for starting that and keeping that going, but like, the community service, again, people like that, everyone likes that, it's like, you know, everyone likes it, and it makes everyone happy, and like, it's not something those people just do on their own, but when it's a collective thing, people like to do it, and it leaves an impact.
Have they delivered yet?
Oh, new, Friday.
Friday.
Yeah. Oh my gosh, yeah, we did some shopping today, we got quite a bit, because like, everywhere in town donates, and it's simple. But I've seen at other schools, they'll do, especially in Thanksgiving, they'll do giant trash cans like all around the school to collect, some for clothes, some for cans, and it's like a thankful, thankful October. And they'll kind of spend all October or November, like, they'll pick a month, and I think that's really cool, and they'll have like, I've seen kindness posters, where they have this big poster, and the kind is where like, you stamp like the I, then you take a poster and like, you post it, and then it goes to like class points. It's like a competitive, but also it's like totally giving back, and it's not like the kids aren't willing to do that, and I think that's really cool, and that also just kind of gets everyone happy, you know, you always feel good when you do that. Oh, one more thing. Lensing, so cool, love that guy. Seriously, like, he just got this thing in his classroom, and it's so simple, it's literally so simple, but it makes my day, every day, it makes a lot of people's day. He's got this high table, two high chairs, and little like mini coffee maker with little hot chocolates. And you just take a cup of hot chocolate, and like, I'll find myself in there like reading like Frankenstein on our steaks forever, so much homework. But like, you know, you're in there, and you're just like hanging out, and like drinking your coffee, and it brings up like, you know, because you want to come in, I'm looking forward to it, and I think if you had those in like classes, like, that motivates you for first period, that's where you need it.
So it's inviting.
Yeah, because then coming to school isn't like coming to school and doing the work, it's just like, well, I could be sitting at home, or I could go get some hot chocolate. You know? It's just little things, because I definitely see a lot of heart in a lot of people here. It's just expressing that. It's really working on.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate your positive upbeat.
We've excited for that for you, too.
School is exciting.
Oh my gosh.
Okay. Financial reports, no Crystal, so we can review and email her questions.
Yes, yeah, I did, she, she did want you just to acknowledge, especially in the blue, because we didn't meet in November, that's two months worth of dispersments, and so if it's a little thicker, that's why. I won't make any other comments, other than we still have, taxes are being collected, and, and we'll start to see that as it, in our year date, and anyway, any questions could be directed towards her. We're anticipating that she will, she has an appointment the first week of January with her doctor to potentially be returning to work full-time. Mr. Denning, also, as you may know, had some surgery last week, but he was able to send a report this morning to share, and so it's on the Riley Creek letterhead. The girls' basketball finished their season yesterday, and there's 25 boys signed up for the two, for the boys' team, so we've opted to start a second team and offer a coaching position for that, that went out today. Tomorrow night is the family STEM night from 5:30 to 7:00, lots of exciting activities for the families, so please, if you can, to come on by. We had some district professional development last week, it's got good reviews. Our consultant, Dr. Collins from Cincinnati, worked with principals and me in our observation, classroom observation techniques, and with the teacher, she worked on questioning strategies. As you can anticipate, the holidays bring a lot of special events, so Friday morning, the things will be going on at Riley Creek, as well as the conclusion of the, the announcement of the door contest, I think we had over 30 classroom doors that were created, and, and then a shout-out to our recent addition of Matt Ahern as our attendance advocate, has really got a great thing going at both schools, and in working specifically with kids that are having troubles getting to school, and, so, that's Mr. Denning's report.
Thank you.
Okay. Over at the high school, a couple of major events coming up. Obviously, winter break is in two days, and then there are 15 days left in semester one. It's weird to think about that, we're almost done with the entire first half of the year, but that's a very real thing coming up for kids and for teachers here very soon. We have finals week, the week of January 24th through the 27th. So that's gonna be, again, that's, that's kind of the make or break date for, we're still trying, I've been, as we send home progress reports, trying to educate parents, because there was still some confusion about, oh my gosh, my progress report's here, this is gonna go on my kid's permanent record, right? No, the grade that, that counts is the semester one, that's the one that gets transcribed into your, into your records and things like that. So working with parents to understand that one, we're finally getting to the point that we're understanding the purpose of progress reports, is to give you a progress report before we're at the end of January, and now, they're starting to see that, but they're still, now we're actually at the end of January. So after the new year, we're gonna be looking at having a curriculum night coming up. One of the things, you know, STEM night is fairly inspiring, it's, it's one of those things that, well, they have all these great things that they do over the elementary schools, it's nice to invite people into the school, not just for sports, which are awesome, but also to see what we do here academically, and the high school, well, we don't. So one of the PLCs, the curriculum and leadership team had been meeting since the start of the year, we'd been talking about the potential of doing a curriculum night. Mrs. McGinnis, our English Language Arts teacher, is in the process of getting her administrator's license, and so one of the goals that I encouraged her was to do a community outreach program, and so we identified the idea of doing a curriculum night. We'll be looking at the start of the new semester likely, and I'll have more details on that, and her task over the break is to design and plan an event that the PLC will then meet on and talk about implementation after the break, so that's an exciting thing. To echo Mr. Wilson's, kudos to Mr. Ahern, he's our attendance advocate, he's been working one-on-one with a couple of our kids, the one, he's been working with our highest flyers for attendance, and we've seen pretty major attendance improvement with those kids. I mean, they're still, it's still a struggle from time to time, but having that positive face, rather than just waiting for a consequence for not being there, is a real, real powerful thing, because I like to think I'm a fairly nice guy, but at the end of the day, I'm also the principal and the one that has to enforce things, so when I show up at your house, it's a little scarier than what he does. So that's, it's been a real positive force around here, kids have responded well to them, teachers are responding well to them, it's, it's a good, it was an excellent hire. The other thing is, as we look at technology, the digital arts classrooms now are daily used by two classes, that was, looking back at October, I told you we had bought Adobe software for it, we're getting ready to launch, we're getting ready to implement. So Mr. Lensing's digital design class meets in there every day now, they're going through a textbook on how to use Adobe Photoshop, as well as our yearbook class, which got in there a little later, and it has really changed the workflow as far as yearbook goes, is being able to be more efficient, use more tools, and things like that. So again, a couple of reports here, I actually, the, oh no, I wrote it right, I just, excuse me, I missed writing my own report here. So the Student Success Team is currently working with seniors at mid-year, so one of the goals with, we get kids on track when they're starting out at 94% for graduation, is because we really target freshmen, seniors, now we're dragging them across the finish line. It's not that many of our seniors are in peril or anything like that, but teenagers are teenagers, and they can take a misstep sometimes, we like to prevent that as much as we can by being a little proactive. So they're really targeting them right now, and then the curriculum team's gearing up for, after the new year, we're gonna be adopting two new curriculum sets at least, one will be for Language Arts and one will be for Science. Those are the two biggest and furthest behind, and the ones that most need of a comprehensive overhaul as far as texts and digital sports and things like that. I'll get into a little bit of that as we get into the bottom of the report here. So that's gonna be the, the big push of the curriculum team in the next couple of weeks, or next couple of months. And then data review and reverse planning. So our last staff meeting, we really looked at some of the data that's going around the building right now, we looked at behavior, we looked at attendance, we looked at last year's achievement, as well as what we're seeing as grades, as they're spread across the board right now, and what we realized is that there are some practices that we need to adopt, that's a little more in line with what we call reverse planning, starting with an end goal in mind and then working back from there. We, for example, we saw that a lot of our freshmen were struggling with science this year, it was, they were having a hard time, you know, they, the teacher's trying, but his grades weren't as high as he wanted, well, he was focusing on physics as the beginning of physical science, and our math achievement for that eighth grade class was very, very low. So they came in, well, no, I shouldn't say very, very low, that makes it sound much more dramatic than it is, it's not where it needed to be for that level of science right on day one. So instead of looking at it as, oh, well, we have ninth graders, they should be at this level, we're gonna look at next year's eighth graders and go, they're at this level, this is what we need to start planning for, to get them to the level we want them to, rather than just taking it for granted that we're gonna hope that they're where they should be. As we look forward to athletics, as Ms. Major pointed out, basketball, really, you've noticed it, too, with the students, there really is a positive air, aura about basketball.
Even softball now, it hasn't, but there's people getting gym memberships. Even softball now, it hasn't, but there's people getting gym memberships and like, going the extra mile for sports and I've never seen anyone do that.
Yeah, which is, uh, it's.
It's new, I think.
As, as somebody who, you know, when I was in high school, athle- as Ms. Major pointed out, athletics were the reason I, I stuck around. I mean, I, I was, I was a kid that had every opportunity and chose to take none of them. Uh, so that was, i- it's nice to see that the basketball teams have started up, that there's been a real upswing in the, the positive morale for students, especially our athletes. It is hard when you see two, two days a week and there's thirty to forty kids out of the building. That can be tough, but at the same time, um, those kids are really working their butts off and they're, they're doing a good job. There was a request that I wanted to bring to the board, um, which is the point B here under number four. So I had a request that came in very late in the day, or, uh, late in the game yesterday, um, asking to do as a fundraiser, um, sell the old basketball uniforms that have, are currently sitting in storage. Uh, but what that would require is for us to declare them surplus. So there was a set of new uniforms purchased, these are the boys' uniforms, by the way, I should clarify. Uh, there was a, a set of new uniforms purchased, there are about thirty old uniforms that are sitting around in various conditions. Um, and they have asked for permission to sell those as a fundraiser potentially, so I would ask that we be allowed to surplus those, um, that is of course up for the board's consideration. Wrestling, they go to Riddle this weekend, uh, all of our participants in this year's wrestling team have seen some growth, which is nice to see. Uh, they took fourth overall at their last invitational, uh, over the break, they'll go to Riddle and they'll also participate at Reed's Board. And then Mathletes, Knowledge Bowl, uh, this is one I decided to add to athletics because, where else would we put them? Uh, they are, uh, they have a schedule of competitions for the year, I feel like I don't say enough about them. Um, consistently though, they're seeing higher participation numbers than, than in the past. Uh, our last Mathletes team, Mrs. Pierce is a, um, if any of you have had the opportunity to meet Mrs. Pierce, she is a, she is a, well, Major just laughed, she's a personality. Um, she's a very charismatic person and kids love her. And so there were kids just dying to sign up for Mathletes and then when she wanted, she wanted to take them all, of course, because that's who she is. She took, I believe it was thirty-five students, the first Mathletes meet, and then she went, okay. You know, restructure how we're doing it, I wanna keep the encouragement, but, oof, did you have something to add about that one?
Uh, yeah, I remember at the beginning of the year, a little background on that, um, 'cause I like Mathletes, so I was like, we're gonna do it this year, she's like, alright, like, she didn't even know what it was. And she's like, alright, and she's like, well, I don't know what it is, so can you come in? So like, over the course of like a month, I came in, come into every class, like every period and I talked. And I'd sign up people that maybe didn't even wanna sign up, I was like, we are going. Thanks, we're gonna rent the school, like, that's my goal, I'm like, we're gonna, we're gonna annihilate it, right? Everyone's gonna be gone doing math and like, that's so cool. But people did it.
Yep.
You know, they went, and I was like, these people don't even, aren't even that good about, like, they're not, oh my god, I love math. But just someone, you know, getting kids into this and trying it is cool because it's not sports. But there's still, you know, thirty-five people going, and I think that's really cool.
Uh, yeah, I, I would echo that because it's, it was rather amazing to hear, uh, because I asked her how many are you gonna have, oh, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, okay. I know you're new here, we need to have the numbers set in stone before you leave, okay. She handed in a roster of thirty-five and I'm going, that doesn't seem, are you sure? And all the, I believe, two showed up, so your, your efforts in recruiting and, and, uh, her efforts in wanting to run it as that big team, they all showed up, so it, it'll be interesting to see how that continues. Um, couple of opportunities as we go forward, last time I put the South Coast Business Employment Corporation on here. Uh, that is the recruit hippo team, um, which meets here at the high school about connecting kids with, um, externships as well as post-high school training and, uh, jobs specifically in careers and trade. We now have a regular person who is on campus with us one day a week, she's here on Mondays. She's been meeting with seniors, with a few seniors, um, inserting that process, which is again, just, it's really nice to see some, again, very direct results of somebody new being in the building. Uh, textbook adoption catch-up, so, because it's not just talk, uh, we have HM, uh, Hilton Mifflin samples arriving January sixth. They'll be here right when we get back, and so we get to dive right into one of three textbook, uh, explorations. We're working with Pearson to set up a time, and then seeking a third sample option. Uh, the state of Oregon recognizes usually three potential companies to work with, um, so we're working there, but they're different for science and for English Language Arts, so we're just kind of working with those to get those third options out there. And then a special thanks to, uh, Gold Beach Youth Fund, so we requested, uh, they came to Mr. Lensing as student council, uh, rep and said, hey, you know, we have this money, what would you guys, what would students like to see in the building if they had this much money to spend? And overwhelmingly, their response was new furniture, which I thought was a pragmatic and interesting choice for teenagers, but, okay, so we honored that and, uh, we were able to get a full new set of science, uh, lab stools, which we just, I spent a good portion of the day yesterday putting together twenty-seven of them, you know, because somebody's gotta do it. And heck, I wanted them in place because they're really nice and, uh, and then we have replacing our, we have our two oldest sets of furniture that are still in classrooms. Uh, the second, well, the oldest, second oldest but most damaged, uh, are those in Ms. Peppin's room, so those are gonna be replaced, um, as of winter break. She's pre-teaching some expectations, we got some really nice Virco desks, which are, um, they're really slick because the, the front two wheel, or the front two legs are on casters, which allow them to be moved very easily and reconfigured for, uh, group work as opposed to just rows, so most of education and pedagogy at this point is technology. Lining up in rows works for some things, but really it's not the way kids should be working anymore, so this allows you the flexibility to quickly move and easily reconfigure rooms and stuff like that. So, yeah, uh, that's, that's where we're at at the high school right now.
No questions? Very good. Uh, superintendent report, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, uh, mine's in the green there, so you can see our enrollment, um, slid a little bit in the last couple of months. We'll just see how that trend continues. Uh, we have made reservations, uh, to attend the Bonds Ballots and Buildings Conference. We're, but maybe, I, I know Andy, you're out of town that weekend, uh, but, um, anyway, a couple others, I've, if you have an interest, let me know, but we've reserved a spot for a board member to attend that session and pre-planning for the future of our, uh, our next steps. Quite a list there, I won't read it for the record, but we did a lot of hiring, uh, during the last couple of months, uh, in attendance. Our mentor teachers, uh, tag coordinator, webmaster, a couple of coaches, uh, an instructional assistant, and then I do, would read for the record that Mary, Mary Breen, the teacher's assistant at Riley Creek, has resigned, uh, effective on January, uh, for purposes of retirement. Uh, maintenance report, just some updates on things we've done in the last couple of months. We added P-gravel, uh, to the play structure on the south playground, southeast corner. Um, and the heating system was, uh, repaired as well as at the high school. Uh, we had some fences and gates down around the track, those were fixed and we've had some plumbing things repaired. I made reference earlier about the, missing all the excitement of the cyclone bomb. Uh, and so in the past week or two, we have completed the work, uh, with the Riley Creek Play Shed. Uh, we had a section that took about eight pieces of plywood and new roofing material. Uh, we had a, a vent cover that blew off here and has been replaced, uh, repaired, replaced. Uh, we had some stadium lights that came down, um, and again, we had a few trees, so, what could have been worse? Unfortunately or fortunately, uh, we didn't meet our deductible on insurance, so it was a little bit of out-of-pocket there. Um, and then finally, just a couple other issues around the community. The one, if you hadn't, were not aware already, uh, Profe, Karen Nichols, our Spanish teacher, is organizing with World Stride Tours, uh, a trip to Peru. There was originally, uh, plans to try to go in June of twenty-twenty and, um, after organizational meeting, they figured that was a lot of money to try to raise in six months. And so, uh, they're now planning a, a trip for the summer of twenty-one, uh, just like the Washington DC trip, this is not a school trip. But I want you to be, be aware that, uh, she, that it's a possibility, uh, for our kids to go. And, and then lastly, um, because I think I was the only one in the room who has not been president. I've been elected, uh, president-elect of the Gold Beach Rotary, um, and so I will be out of the district a couple of days for some training, but, uh, anyway, look forward to a year of service in that organization. That's my report.
Alright, thank you. Um, before I forget, on the basketball jersey thing, I.
Yes.
Do we need to add that? I don't know, how soon?
I wasn't, well, I mean, ideally, they'd like to start selling them as soon as possible, so.
We probably, we probably could have walked it on to the consent agenda, if you don't mind a, a friendly amendment.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I have no objection.
I have no objection.
Okay, we'll just add that to the consent agenda as, as declaring that some surplus.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure when to bring that up, so.
I'm curious, I wanna know how much they're gonna get for a.
You know, I, I think it's about, as, as is often the case with surplus, it's about clearing out some clauses, but we will, we will see. I mean, you never know, there might still be some people in the community that go, hey, that was my team, I'd like to, I'd like to buy the jersey, so that's okay.
And you think your jersey still might be in.
Not from basketball. My basketball jersey didn't exist. Football jersey, I think I have that. Okay, uh, old business, seven point one, student success act update.
So this is in buff color then, and, uh, so, uh, you might recall, we've had four community meetings and gathering input and then we've had the survey link open. This is a compilation of all of the comments between those four, uh, public meetings and the surveys. Uh, again, this is my, my thought on this is we'll continue to keep that open for a little bit and then in January and February, we'll have another round of community meetings, but with a more focused, with the i- uh, focus from these, with the idea of having more deliberate, um, conversations with people about what items rise to the top in the needs assessment. So as we prepare our, our s- uh, student investment account application, um, then we will have a more focused plan. So, these are all unedited, there are a couple in here, again, these are just for your eyes at this point, even though it's, it's public. Uh, there are, I, I did, um, there are a couple of personnels and I've just put XX or YY or something to, uh, but there, there is a couple mentioned of a couple of specific people that I've tried to, um, keep. It's like I'm missing the third page, someplace there was the, the third question.
I missed it.
My bad.
I had a question, yeah.
Was the barriers question, the, the first one was what programs, oh, so, so it's the first one that's missing, what things are, are going well. Am I right?
Yeah, I was gonna say on your, on your, I guess I didn't catch up till the beginning, the duplicate, this was on there twice.
Oh, my bad.
Yeah, I had this, I had two of the same one.
There should be three, yeah, there should be three, the first, and I'll get that out with, um.
Cause that was my problem when I was copying, I thought, well, this is the exact same thing.
Yeah, my bad.
This is a, uh, response mixture of faculty and the community?
Yes, and to be fair, one faculty member has responded. So all the rest of these are community responses at this point.
Were these like verbal or were these written down?
So it was in that, in the, on the, the survey, um, for those who chose to do the survey, the question was at the top. Uh, so, uh, what do you like best about our schools is the first question, the second one is what areas could we improve? The third one is what are the barriers?
We actually got this much response from the community.
Yes, and these were in the community sessions that we had.
And is this from the board they had at the library during the?
Yes, so for during the gingerbread cookie house night, uh, the sessions we had at Riley Creek and here, uh, and that Rotary Club was another one.
Kind of gives it a different, I was trying to.
Yeah.
Read it in the perspective.
Yes.
If it was coming out of district or.
Right, and, and I, I'll, I'll be able to pull that specific data, how much of a, a staff versus community in our future, uh, future discussions.
I'm not sure if it makes me happy or less happy.
Yeah. Yeah. So again, these would be for, uh, so the next steps again would be to try to have a couple more meetings and then begin to focus, funnel in where the priority needs are, and that would be a big part of your discussions as well, as you see priorities. We do need to honor the process that the law requires and, and make sure through that equity lens, we're looking, you know, through, for the underrepresented groups as well and how they would answer these questions. That's it for my success updates.
Okay. Any questions? Seven point two, uh, protocol for citizen input at the board of directors meeting.
So Andy, I think you, you shared one tonight, um, to the board, um, in your pink packet, you have, you see one. This essentially I took from the, um, OSBA website, uh, as some suggested language. So that's one item, the second item would be, uh, the brochure, which is, um, if it, if it gets, if it gets printed right, it folds into a brochure and it opens up and, like, welcome to the board meeting, this is, this is what we talk about, this is how you could be on the board, this is, sort of explains what's, how you can, how you can speak, um, how we run the meetings, what we can, what you can talk about, and so on. So this would be more of an informational, again, I cut and paste this from OSBA's suggestions and then localized it for our board. So these are just here for you, for you to acknowledge or approve or to move forward with. Luke did say he liked, in his comments, uh, shared that he liked the brochure, just say that in his absence tonight.
I liked the brochure, I liked the idea of it, I had a few, um, revisions, just.
Yeah, please, Luke.
I mean, I don't know, I could give you what, I just kinda put my notes down as I was thinking, but a couple of the things, just like board response, um, making sure that like that aligns with how the policy reads. Cause I think there's a, there's a verbiage in there, and you know, the, and don't quote me, but the, you know, the chair may respond or refer, just, just kind of make sure it adheres to what's in the policy.
Aligning the policy, okay.
Be a good one.
Okay.
And then, also, when speaking, you know, kind of, instead of a good rule of thumb to keep your testimony under three minutes, I mean, you know, I mean, our normal thing is five.
Okay. Thanks for catching that.
And then, I don't know if I'm hogging all the time right now, uh, just talking about, I think, I remember talking about this, but, uh, when submitting written, like, to the board written testimony, as you call it here, I don't, I believe we had talked about giving everything directly to the board secretary.
That's correct, uh-huh. Uh, to hand out, uh, present to board secretary at meetings, so I can.
Yeah, to, to hand to the board or however.
Yes, 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 got it.
And maybe talking about the idea when we, when, when we have those very emotional meetings, when there's a central topic of focus, it also talks about in policy, you know, encouraging people to, if you're all gonna come say the same thing, appoint a single person as representative, let us know that you speak on behalf of this. I don't know, I was just thinking, tying some of the policy words into that. And then just the idea of maybe, I know it's not good to focus on the negative, but if you have a complaint, maybe telling people where to look or, or, for the process.
Okay, like, uh, refer to policy KL.
Like, please don't kind of yell at us right now.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, please.
I put it in bold, before you make public comments.
Yeah. So are there some items on, I'm sorry, Andy, did you?
No, I like it, I, and I missed this.
Although the idea, did you wanna include any of the, this verbiage in the brochure or in the, in your?
Well, I guess that's my question to the board is do, I, I wrote up some bullets, Kayla, you can have that if you want, just of things that we've run into in the past that are rooted in existing policy but haven't necessarily been enforced or even made, you know, the public been made aware of them until there's a real problem. So I mean, my, my question is, is do we wanna try and include all that on? So I mean, my question is, is do we want to try and include all that on brochure, or do we want to just have a separate sheet of public comment guidelines that's a little more detailed for people to refer to?
I think it would be good if it was all in one place, that's my opinion.
We could take some of this and put it on here, but also maybe, if you're interested in the, I'm not sure if you are, if you're interested in the comment card, this could be one side of the card, and then you flip it over and your people write. So again, they've seen the.
I, you know, we talked about it in October. I, almost every other public body out there has you fill out something in advance, and everything's turned into the chair in advance of the meeting. I mean, so I don't, I guess, I think I said the last time, I didn't want it to be seen as stifling public comment, but in reality, it's basically following a process similar to almost every other public body. So I don't, you know, I like it in one regard, in that regard. It would eliminate a lot of the issues we've had over the past four or five years. Because yeah, I see that. Is this, was this just?
This is boilerplate OSBA.
From OSBA, yeah. How does everybody else feel?
I just feel like even, you know, something like what Mr. Wilson presented here, and some of your ideas, I don't know if you can whittle it down to just an opening thing that you just do every month?
Well, that's what I.
Just to put it.
That's what got me started on that sheet, was just some real brief points to hit on, because I, when I remember, I always try and say, you know, nothing directed at specific personnel to have to keep it to the district as a whole. Yeah, well, yeah, I like that as well, just maybe include that in my, in the chair's statement, but you know, try and keep the public stuff as, as simple as possible.
I just noticed I have one other star here that I had a question about. It was the idea that, so there's public or citizen input, as we call it, in, but then it was inviting citizen comment on specific agenda items at the time during, sort of the opening.
That's up to you, if you.
I would say.
Well, now, yeah, that's the one they're itemizing, you have to have submitted a card in advance of the meeting.
I was looking at this one right here. Audience members who wish to comment on agenda items will be called upon at the appropriate time, so.
Which appropriate time might be the citizen, not during the agenda, but during, during the public comment.
I like that idea of splitting it out.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, the other paragraph that went with it is there. If you want to speak during the meeting, please fill out an agenda card located, so on and so forth. Yeah, it would certainly clean it up.
I think it would be a valuable piece to have at the meetings.
Yeah.
So would you like, am I hearing yes for a card?
Yes.
Okay, and then?
For me.
Okay. And with it, we'll put this information on the card, as well as consolidate some of this and put it on the brochure, just where it's not covered.
I just want to, I feel obligated, like if we choose to go the card route too, we have to hold to it.
Yes.
Otherwise, we're going to end up in trouble on the other side.
Yeah, and it was actually, it brought up to me after the fact, that, not that we're going to hit a rough patch, but it's easy to implement this process when everything's rosy, but when you have a real legitimate issue, I think we'll be thankful that we did.
I was going to say, it does help to streamline things, having come from a district where there was a larger, you know, there's a larger body, and granted, they're not your neighbors that are typically coming in, which is, I think, one of the challenges in a smaller community. It really does streamline some of those things, the meetings that have run very long here, where we're seeing a significant number of discussions on the same topic and things like that. The limitation of saying that, yes, we're nominating this person as our primary discussion point, when you sign in, you actually have to sign in with any potential speaking subjects you want to take. The board secretary would take that and narrow it down to a certain number of commentary on that subject. So it's one of those things that, there are options to do that, and it does maintain sort of the integrity of the board meeting, which the goal is to offer public comment, but not have public comment necessarily dominate three hours of a meeting or something like that.
Do we want to put a time on here, say, all cards need to be to the chair by 10 minutes before the meeting, or 15, or whatever it is?
That's a good, good point.
Yeah. That's what people are running up.
That's what most boards are doing at this point, is if you want to speak, you need to be there 10 minutes beforehand, and you need to make a plan to do so.
10 minutes then.
How will you facilitate, like if there's a group of them that are coming in, are they going to know ahead of time that they need to have a spokesperson, or are we going to guide them towards that? You know, there could be a group, and maybe they say, I don't want that person to speak.
Yeah, I think I could spend that 10 minutes, you know, going through, you know, looking at the cards and seeing how many people intend to speak, and if it's, you know, we've got 10 people all on the same subject, I'll just go to them and say, hey, let's, you know, let's narrow this down to two or three.
Okay.
Or one. Yeah.
Yeah.
Whoever the chair is at the time.
You've got a two-year stamp.
Two?
Kayla's next.
Yeah, that's right.
So how about if I clean this up, and I'll send it out to you?
Yeah.
And then we'll, if we get a go, then we'll have them ready at the January meeting?
Sure. All right, any questions? Other comment? Very good. All right, new business, second reading of proposed new policies.
All right, so you can see, we've organized this in two packets. First one says proposed across it. These are all the things that were new, and any changes were, are in yellow. And so would you like me just to go through them real quick, or quickly? So the drone, ECA CB, it has not changed from our first reading. The reimbursable meals and milk, Crystal went through and edited it to be specific to the programs that we have in our district, which are school lunch program and school breakfast program. We do not do the milk program or the SNAP program. So all the language in there has been reflected. And just because I don't want you, any of you to be, or us to be on the local news, in one of the highlighted areas is regardless of the ability to pay, a student shall be provided a reimbursable meal on request. So some kid will always have a meal, but we make, we're not going to, yeah, make a scene. GBC, that's the staff ethics. The one change I wanted to clarify was, we had the discussion about staff or employees, and so I am proposing that we do what our current practice is, which is in order to support student-employee relationships, employees may accept free passes to district extracurriculars. That's our practice, and we would continue that practice. Interscholastic activities, I G D J, there was some may or will, and the board chose may, so those are highlighted in yellow a couple times. Admissions, I went through this a few times, I think, I think that was the language around open enrollment, but I couldn't find it in there, so forget that one, I guess. And then J E C B, admission of non-resident students, this was essentially adding dates to a timeline. So I put March 15th, so in the, not that we have a major rush of non-resident students coming here, but if, aligning March 15th begins, as we begin to declare, or design staffing structures for the next year, if we had an abundance, or we had a room in our district to have more students come in, then that would be the time the principals would set that. If we had a student from China who, or anyplace else, who wanted to attend here and not be a part of an exchange program, we would know that, and you would set the tuition on or around July 1st. That's really on that. So those are the new proposals. And you can wait and hold off, do an action item on all of them together, or you can do them in two separates, whichever you prefer.
I would just do it all at once.
Okay, shall we continue with the next pack?
Sure.
Yes. So in, if you're following along, I kind of made some notes in the pink, on the changes that you made or suggested. So AC, the nondiscrimination, the new language is in yellow, the red is the struck language, it's basically updating from the law change. The AR that goes on with it is the procedure in case there's a complaint about, regarding discrimination or harassment in a new form. The BBAA, it was as presented in October, new language is in yellow, old language is in red to be struck. And criminal records checks, record checks and fingerprinting, again, changes in yellow, striking out in red. This does align, thankfully, with our current practice of what we're doing. This one also had some may and wills, and the board chose may last time, about may be terminated, may be employed. We pretty much don't move, we do a good background check before people are with kids. The AR that goes along with it accompanies the previous policy. Policy I G A I, homosexuality, essentially adds, the line is culturally inclusive, that's the only change to that policy. Talented and gifted, this again goes with the change in the law, and so that's highlighted in yellow. And it continues with an AR about an appeals process for any tag placement, and the timeline of working with to hear your grievances about that. I G BBC, talented and gifted, again, just more about the appeals process is highlighted. And it's accompanying AR, same type thing. With the form attached. And volunteers, II CC, some minor language changes, nothing significant. And IKF, somehow missing off that sheet, was the idea, it added.
Called IQA.
Did I forget what? IK, I did that last time too, didn't I?
It's called IKA on the pink sheet.
Yeah, my bad. I did that last time too, so watch for cut and paste. It adds the language, adds some clarifying language around modified diplomas for students who are emancipated, and how they can qualify for a modified or extended, or if you're a veteran, there is some required, not required, allowances to award diplomas to veterans, even in post-service, post-mortem. Staff-student-parent relations, a minor change about related to having a parent, parental plan, and that the district work with both, both sets of parents in those types of situations. The J E C B, admission of non-resident students, that's the policy of which we had the AR before, again, some minor changes, put in the March 15th deadline, or timeline in the tuition setting. J E C F, inter-district transfer of residents, essentially was the deletion of open enrollment in the red. And then the AR accompanying, as it relates to open enrollment. J F C F, the hazing harassment, et cetera, language, they've added definitions of domestic violence, and how that is a part of this policy now. And families and children who are going through that, or employees. And then the reporting procedures is the AR. One thing I did make, hopefully it was okay with you, so if there's a complaint against the principal, I, the superintendent gets the complaint. If the complaint's about the superintendent, it goes through the board chair. So there was, in this one, if there's a complaint against the board chair, where does it go? It may have been a little regressive to go to the vice chair, so I inserted the choice of a district council. Does that sound all right, or? Be good, guys.
What would be considered district council?
Attorney.
OSBA.
Yeah, OSBA.
Okay.
Yeah. Would that sound logical, rather than putting the vice chair in that situation?
Yes.
Okay. Policy J E D, student absences and excuses, this is a little bit of a different one, because this now further defines what we include for excusing kids from school. So you might remember, one of the new changes was illness, including mental and behavioral health. The other new one was a student of a dependent of a member of the armed services or is on an addict who called to active duty, they're excused up during, for certain times of the year. And just to clarify, where it says number seven, other reasons deemed appropriate by the school administrator, when arrangements are made in behalf, are made in advance. So we call this prearranged, is kind of the local term, we use that. So if we, if you check ahead of time, we count it as unexcused for attendance purposes, but we allow students to make up the work when it's done prearranged. It was difficult to try to be the, in judgment, if it's a vacation, we didn't want to get into vacation versus extended family emergency versus, so as long as it was prearranged, the end result is, is that students can continue to get work and stay up on, stay on track. The J F C J, weapons in school, that essentially the change on the backside is no longer do districts request suspension of students' driving privileges as a part of expulsion. Probably the biggest change is the J G A B, a lot of new definitions around restraint, and those are all listed with the new language in yellow and the struck language in red. And then the accompanying AR that goes with that. And then finally, a revision of KL, that makes the policy inclusive for any person that resides in the district or as a staff member, or as a student, has the right to use the public complaint process, and then the procedure that's. Sorry, I went through this kind of quickly, but be happy to review any of those at your discretion or questions. You have a question?
I'm good.
I move to approve the second reading of the new and revived policies as presented and amended.
I'll second it.
Paul is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. All right, 8.2, grant applications.
Yeah, so as a returning practice, I can give you updates on grants that have been written during the. written during the, since the last time we met, a grant was written to the Wild Rivers Community Foundation to support Riley Creek families during the holidays in the amount of eight hundred dollars and it was applied for and received. And additionally, Ally Merramore, our Riley Creek garden coordinator, has applied for a farm-to-school grant through the Oregon Department of Education and we should be hearing back from that fairly soon. I'm not sure if you really need any action on that or if it's, that's just more for your information. I, I would think it would require action if it was something that was going to have a long, extended commitment to the district. But some of these smaller ones are really more for your information.
Okay. Eight point three, classified employee evaluation form.
And I apologize, I meant to have that in the packet, but in my notes I share with you that both the license and administrative evaluation systems are with the Legends rubric, if you will, that was authored by Salem Kaiser. And the, so that system also has a tool for classified employees that, you know, in the past, well, in our current one, it says, does someone meet, it's kind of, it's a, it's very black and white, it's, are you meeting or you're not? There's no really room for growth in, in, for our classified employees as far as how they're being evaluated in a formal way. So I, I brought that tool to the leadership of the Classified Association and they were all thumbs up. They, they too feel this is a, an improvement in the way they're evaluated. I apologize for not having it in front of you, but it does come to you tonight for recommendation to be approved. I apologize, to have take my blind faith, it's, it's a, it's a good tool, I'll, I'll put it in the notes.
Is this, I, this is a board level thing, huh?
It is, because it's a part of their contract.
Oh, yeah, okay. Never mind.
Yeah. Actually, in the contract, it says that the board and association shall have an evaluation committee of which they can make recommendations to, to change. And so since it wants a change, I, I would like it to be a, a part of the record.
Well, I think you can just email it to us.
Okay.
Yeah. Anybody has an issue, we can go back.
Okay.
Repair.
Okay.
After the fact. If everybody's okay with that?
I move to approve the new classified employee evaluation format. Leave it as that.
Yeah. Sorry.
All second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, approved.
Eight point four, the, you see there, we have a couple of employees who've requested unpaid leave, so they're following the, the contract in the sense that this is leave up and beyond that what they require, that they are already eligible for. And in order to do that, the board needs to approve those leaves. And so there, the details are listed there for your information. Both Mr. Denning and I would recommend the, your consideration to approve their requests as requested.
I move to approve the request for unpaid leave for Leigh Anne Darling and Diane Walling as presented.
I'll second it.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Be approved.
Thank you. Then the last item, this will, for those of you that are veterans on the board, this is the time of year that the, we're starting to plan for next year. And this is the process for our services through the South Coast E S D begin with the adoption of the local service plan. So this is the salmon colored piece of paper and on the second side, if you will, this depends which one, it says design, it shows on the left there, this, the services that all the ten districts in our E S D receive, these are voted on annually, in my four years here, they haven't changed. So in tier one, that's those administrative support, technology, special ed and school improvement, those are all areas that we get some support from the E S D. Then the tier two are, we get a list of items, which for us mostly are in the special education area. Think of tier two as, we, we as a small district could not afford to have our own psychologist, our own hearing specialist, our own nurse, and so we can pick from a menu and say we want X amount, you know, a point two five or a point one F T E that we get as, so the E S D is the employer provides the service, but that's what tier two is, is, is about.
Is there any change in the technology area as we make those improvements with the...
So technology is, that's a good, good question. We no longer have any, because our technology services are through Kuzcoy Electric. So this is more on a, of a more global one. They, they would provide support, but it's actually one that I, that, I'm surprised is still there because most of the districts have gone away from the E S D dependency on the E S D for that.
Do they even have a person for that?
They, they, they do, but they take care of the E S D things.
So you were saying, I always, I always fail to recall, but the core, the tier one is, is, is voted on by the larger group?
Sorry, so the, each year, the, the superintendents agree...
Of the area.
Of the areas.
Gotcha, okay.
Right, right.
So right now, we're not necessarily, I mean, you know, as a tier one...
So our...
But we don't get to free up any extra resolution dollars to, unfortunately?
No, 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 unless we, unless we opt out, like...
Completely.
Right. Or like, like Brookings does, they, you have, a district has the option to have its dollars flown through and then provide those services, but as I shared before, that would be difficult.
Right.
Especially in the special ed area.
Right. Okay.
So asking for your approval for this, then we would return this back to the E S D for their records.
So it's basically just status quo, same as last year?
It is.
Yeah. Did the, did the price remain the same?
Uh, yes, we're actually, yes, the, the, that's something we've talked about the last two superintendents' meetings. The, the current philosophy of the, of the ten superintendents is they don't want any district who's maybe had a dip in enrollment to lose money in the allotment. And so a couple of the larger districts, specifically North Bend, who has its own charter school, that takes, you know, eighty-five percent of its kids live outside of the E S D and so that's always, that fund of money that the, the funds generated by the ORFA kids is split up with amongst all of the smaller districts. And so that formula is continuing to be the same. So again, status quo on that.
I move to approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one local service plan with the South Coast E S D.
I'll second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Service plan approved.
If you could sign one of those.
Yeah.
I have a white copy.
Here's a white copy.
Oh, you got a white copy.
Thank you.
Can I sign it?
But it doesn't have a whole...
All right, uh, individual board member reports. Don't everybody go at once?
I could start. It's, the school looks great on the outside, I know I mentioned that earlier, but the decorations, the lights, and I saw students doing it also, which was really nice and it's just fun to drive by, but it's a nice look for the school, so makes it look fun. Just like you were saying with sports and everything, so it's a little add there, so.
Yeah.
I'm looking forward to some night tomorrow.
Good.
I have nothing to add other than thank you for your work and everybody have a happy holiday and enjoy your two weeks.
I just had a curiosity, as we lose stadium lights every storm, is there a long, is there a fix to that? Because I know that's not a small bill.
Right.
And, and with a lot of other deferments, it's just kind of, that's a very specific one, because when the time comes to need, if you don't have, that's a...
Well, I, I think I will take a, a step and kind of answer it this way. We might be looking at all other ways to have our football games, meaning Friday or Saturday afternoons.
During the day.
Yeah. Um, there is a possibility that for football only next year, that Gold Beach will go down to the one A level and it would be an eight man. And that decision, Kevin staffed it with Josh and I, was permitted in the two-year cycle because of the win-loss record we had within the division that we qualified for the next two years to move down, to be more competitive. But with that said, it, it wouldn't go to eight man and many of those schools play their games on Friday or Saturday afternoons. Now, that's a, that's a different answer than probably, but...
At least you're thinking of other ways.
Right. But, but I think the preferred way would be, let's play under Friday night lights and, and find out what it costs to actually, and maybe that's something Kevin can help do some.
Well, I've, I've asked him to identify the cost of reinstallation of our current lights as well as also there's the potential for upgrading them to L E D lights and things like that and what, because realistically, we're looking at lights that are much older at this point and so finding replacements for those as opposed to new wiring and things like that. The other complicating factor, when you're talking about storm blown lights, is we're not talking about just rehanging something up. You're having an electrician come out, they're up at a height of however many feet, they have specialized equipment and they're having to potentially rewire lighting. So that's, that's going to get very expensive very fast, so that is something that long term we will have to consider.
Surely there's some grant money floating out there somewhere.
Yeah, I would think so.
Rehab, some, you know, some sports associated grants for that. Don't violate it, buddy.
There you go. And the only other thing I wanted to bring up was the district leadership team, I just wanted to, not, I just wanted to say thank you. I think that that's a great forum for board to faculty relations with, with teacher leaders and I look forward to, you know, what comes from, I, it's not often, I mean, it was just refreshing on our, our first meeting there, just kind of bouncing, I, for a while, our group got off course and kind of was just talking.
Yeah.
And I think there's value to that.
Yeah. Well, I tried to encapsulate your excitement with, with the staff the next day and the, you know, specifically your, the two comments that, that you and Andy made, one, that you wish you could have this type of conversation with every teacher, the opportunity, and that Andy said, we've been looking, trying to do this for four or five years. So we're, we're finally making that progress towards recognizing the value of, of, of our licensed staff in making some of those decisions. All our staff's important, but specifically in some of the things that you're addressing with student achievement, licensed staff is a significant part of that, so, yeah, I think they felt the same way when I met with them today.
Oh, so you can kind of that same line reading those survey reports, you know, like there's, some of these things are happening.
Yeah.
And they've been in the works for two or three years, which is, changing the tide is a, a very...
Yeah.
Difficult thing.
Slow, slow.
Fast.
Yeah. That's all.
I, I enjoyed the, I mean, having, I, I didn't really see the wisdom, or I saw the wisdom in it, but it didn't really dawn on me until afterward. We were, we were having them involved in our goal-setting process and discussing our goals and I think that, yeah, there's lots of value in that, creating buy-in.
And so the board is arbitrarily setting some goals.
Here's what we're doing.
What do you guys think? Yeah?
Okay, uh, next meeting Wednesday, January fifteenth, two thousand twenty, six P M at the Gold Beach High School library. If anybody has any further comment, we'll adjourn this meeting at seven twenty-four P M.
Thank you.
Thank you.